Anybody specific for? Anybody specific for?
I did it last time.
You didn't, okay.
Poppy days.
Oh, yeah, that was good too. It's five fifteen, time for our regular scheduled meeting. As always, we first start off with Pledge Allegiance. I think I'll ask Rob Jarman to lead us because he only has one month left with us for the city. Rob, will you do that for us, please? He's a little shocked when I.
The Pledge Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, thanks, Rob. Roll call, we have everybody here. Hey, that's great, great news. First thing is a citizen comments, it's a period to provide the opportunity for members of the public to address this council on any matter, including items on the agenda. For anyone wishing to address the council, please step up to the microphone, give your name and mailing address, and state the matter of your interests. We will limit to three minutes, I think Doug.
Yes, sir.
Doug and I went to high school together. Thanks for being here, Doug.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'll move the microphone here, I was gonna open one item, sorry. Douglas Miller, P O Box six zero five Rock Island, my name is a resident of the city of Wenatchee. For purposes of mailing, it's a P O box. Back in two thousand and six, I was elected and served as you are today as a member of the city council. Continued that through two thousand and twelve, those were some of the early days of the creation of the Public Facilities District. And the ultimate culmination of that, of course, was the construction of what you know as the Town Toyota Center, and the P F D operates that today. I attended their board meeting earlier today with a couple of specific concerns. I wanted also to share those with you tonight. Because it exists only because the city of Wenatchee back then created an agreement by which the city would take on certain debts and help finance the construction of that. As you're probably aware, with a little bit of history or Wikipedia search, things went wrong, really wrong, and the city of Wenatchee found itself in a position of not being able to take care of some of that debt. And ultimately, we were in court with a decision by the State Supreme Court that the city had exceeded its debt capacity. Fast forward, two thousand and twelve, the voters were asked to step forward and please support an issue of a sales tax increase regionally to help retire the original debt and take care of things going forward. They did, sixty-three percent or thereabouts. So the board does receive reimbursements, if you will, for debts that they have since that time issued, long-term bonds and so forth. I believe some of those are gonna retire as late as twenty forty-two. Our sixtieth class reunion, should we be around for that? At Wenatchee High School, a long time from now. In the meantime, the board meets routinely and approves and takes care of business down there. And one of the things that came to my attention is how that original agreement was worded and the authority that you have as a city to enforce the agreement. The most recent amended agreement is dated in two thousand and twenty-one, signed by the mayor, and it's part of your public record here. I would encourage you as a council to look at that agreement and make sure that the terms are being met and that the debts are being addressed and that no other expenses or unnecessary, shall we say, projects are being brought to that board for approval and funding beyond taking care of the facility, its debts, its long-term capital improvement needs, its payroll, and so forth. Having said that, I also noted today on the agenda that there were a couple of vouchers, I shouldn't say vouchers, a couple of months of vouchers that were slated for approval and was not completed, perhaps because the vouchers weren't available. So as a secondary concern, I'm wondering how they pay their bills if the board isn't approving the vouchers on a regular basis.
Yeah. What's that, did he? Oh, you good, Doug? You want thirty more seconds or so?
I really don't have anything to add. I appreciate everyone's time tonight, it was my concern and hopefully my opportunity to take a look at that.
And I know, and I'm just gonna comment because it was brought up by Mayor Crawford, and I discussed it prior, but we also are looking at the policy changes of how that would affect us and what we need to look at for our future, so. Thanks for bringing, addressing that to the board today, Doug, I appreciate that. Right, anybody else? We have a few other people like to come up for three minutes, talk about anything they'd like to address the council. Seeing none, we'll go on to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve agenda vouchers amended from previous meetings. Also, a motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, appointing Richard Upton as a voting member to the Code Enforcement Board, excuse me. Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, designating three city council members as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington City's Annual Business Meeting Conference for two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Rodenstein to approve agenda vouchers amended from previous meeting, also to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, appointing Richard Upton as a voting member to the Code Enforcement Board. And motion to approve Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, designating three city council members as voting representatives on behalf of the city of Wenatchee at the Association of Washington City's Annual Business Meeting Conference for two thousand and twenty-four. Any comments or discussion? Comment, I will say I met with Richard Upton, and I'm not sure if you guys saw everything, but he used to be a mayor a few years ago in a different state, and moved here with his wife a few years ago, so I got a chance to meet with him for like a half hour, so you guys know. Who are the three representatives? I'm just gonna throw that out there before we vote.
May I get pardon?
Who are the three representatives, they're going?
I'm going, Charlie's going, I don't know who else is going.
Oh, we can have one more, okay.
Me too, sorry.
Oh, okay, all right, just curious. Any other comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. We have a proclamation, Memorial Day proclamation, does somebody have that? All right, perfect, thank you.
Proclamation. Since the inception of our country by the establishment of the United States Constitution, it has on occasion been necessary to protect the concepts of the Constitution, and whereas at times it became necessary to resort to armed conflict to protect these concepts, which gave each citizen of the United States certain inalienable rights. And whereas citizens of our great country have given of their lives in the protection of these unalienable rights. And whereas each year we set aside one day to which we can revive the memory of those who have sacrificed and those who have passed on. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, as Memorial Day. In the city of Wenatchee, and I urge all citizens to join us in honor in their memory. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on this twenty-third day of May, two thousand and twenty-four, Mike Poyer, Mayor.
Do we have somebody here to accept the proclamation? Not sure if we do. So, and that proclamation will be read at the cemetery on Monday, so everybody knows also. So, let's have some fun. Commissioner Allen, please come up and talk to us, tell us what you're doing.
What am I here for? Mike, I'm here for you. Because I know you're excited about this project, we've had the good fortune to meet a couple of times. Good evening, thank you all for letting me be here tonight to share with you more about this wonderful joint project that we've been moving forward on. To give you a little bit of a background on myself, I have sat in your seat, not here, but in Shalan as a former council member, and I am in my second year, so a newly elected P U D commissioner, serving in at-large position. And it is with great honor that I'm here to share with you a brief introduction about, or tell you a little bit more about the project that we have going, and to hopefully celebrate where we are in it now. So to give you a little bit of background, am I driving this? Okay. I don't know where my, okay, there we go. I'm going fast, going fast. Sure. So, the city of Wenatchee and Shalan P U D cooperatively developed the Riverfront Park Master Plan in two thousand and twenty-one, which includes three distinct phases. The master plan was formally approved by the Wenatchee City Council on January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Extensive public outreach occurred in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, and the community responded by providing hundreds of comments that shaped design of the master plan and the first phase, which we're seeing up here. Our project goals included to develop a sense of place and identity for Riverfront Park, seamlessly integrate existing and proposed park elements, create elements of consistency and elements of distinction, clearly articulate site circulation and wayfinding, provide visual and physical access to the river, locate ideal spaces for active and passive recreation, design spaces and activities for a wide range of users. And over the last two years, detailed design of the first phase was completed and a contract was recently awarded for construction. The city's financial commitment to the project is two million, and the Shalan Douglas Regional Port provided funding and support for environmental analysis and related design work. The P U D is providing the balance of the funding, which is approximately nine point seven million dollars. Riverfront Park encompasses around thirty-one acres, and most of the land in the park is owned by the city of Wenatchee and has been leased to Shalan P U D since nineteen eighty-three to support park development, consistent with the district's federal license for the Rock Island project. The project, as we go further, the trail, where is that trail?
Go back up to the trail, there we go.
There we go. The trail will be split in several areas to allow separate safe spaces for all forms of allowed recreation. Other areas will see widened trails. These improvements will enhance trail use and safety and address many public comments received during the outreach. The Wenatchee Riverfront Railway will remain, and an apple-themed children's play area and bathroom will be constructed near the Railway Depot. The Plaza area will see substantial improvements that will make this an even more inviting gathering space. And I know this is what Mayor is most happy about, which is the new splash pad with a Columbia River Steamboat theme. That will be added to the area at the end of the Fifth Street, directly south of the existing bathroom. The P U D has heard many visitors already asking for this popular new feature. Additional picnic seating and a new picnic shelter also are planned, and part of the trail along Riverside Nine Apartments will be leveled and widened for speed control and safety. Access to the river in this location will also be improved. Some public art will be relocated to other sections of the park to fit within the new improvements, but all existing art will remain on-site once construction is complete. At Walla Walla Point Park, the P U D will add a new full-court basketball feature, line for tournament play to replace the previous courts located in the tennis and pickleball area. The popular North End parking lot will be fortified, restored, and resurfaced with asphalt. Construction is anticipated to begin in June, so right around the corner, and is expected to wrap up in spring of two thousand and twenty-five. The construction is being planned to minimize disruption, creating detours and short phases when needed to limit the impact to trail and park visitors. And so, very much would like to thank Mayor and all of you council members, and also former Mayor Frank Koontz, special thanks to city staff, and to Dave Erickson, the Parks Director, and also to you, do I call you Miss Gloria? Laura. So we appreciate this wonderful partnership and know that this is gonna be a pride for us, as well as we hope for you. Any questions or comments on the project?
Well, it should be, you know, this originally was supposed to be like financially shared equally, and you guys saw a bigger vision and helped. And thank you for coming to the table and just doing it all, and it's just so impressive that you're doing this. And you're right, I got three grandchildren, and I dream I was a little kid, and I get to watch them to play in this organization. But it's just an unbelievable thing that you're, I can't tell you how impressed and proud that you guys can do this and do this for us. So I just thank you and all the commissioners to come through with this.
You are so welcome, you know, it's amazing when we have communities that are thinking ahead for legacy and leaving these parks and the green spaces. There are so many communities that haven't taken the time or spent the money, and having that green space available is important, not only for us today, but for our future. So for this commissioner, I am incredibly excited to have your partnership and to see your vision as well come through with our wonderful staff. You know, we all know that the P U D staff really has spearheaded much of this with your efforts. So, thank you.
No, it's mostly you guys. It's okay, we're all transparent, it's mostly you guys, and it really, take the credit where it deserves, it's you guys.
Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Any other comments for Commissioner? Made my week, thank you guys, very much. Go on to our action items.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. A little quick note, Justin and Kelly ran off, but yeah, construction is gonna, is scheduled to start June fourth. Down there, we had pre-construction meeting earlier this week. Of note, the, for us anyway, the art that's down there at the end of pedestrian bridge, that's scheduled to come out, assuming the schedules hold, come out June twentieth through twenty-fifth and be relocated to the P S C during construction. And if the schedule holds for construction, it would be going back different, we're shuffling the deck a bit, and it's going back at the end of August, so August twentieth or so. So it should be just out of the park for a couple of months while construction's happening. But that's not why I'm here tonight, this evening, so I'm requesting acceptance of a Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation Grant. Last September, we applied for a little over twenty thousand dollar grant from the Department of Archaeology Historic Preservation to do an information sign kiosk and section markers in the cemetery, and it's really a customer service item. So, the kiosk itself will have slots for brochures, so if staff isn't around, people can get information about the cemetery. Kind of the cooler thing is it'll have a, like a shopping mall, you are here type sign with the cemetery rules, hours, all that good stuff, as well as a map, and a Q R code that'll link to our city website, which has a find a grave type function. So if you're looking for Aunt Edna or somebody, you can type in that name, and it'll take you and show you where that grave is within the cemetery. So, we're requesting acceptance of that this evening, and with any luck, we would have this project done, depending on procurement processes, by the end of summer. There is no match required, there's a little bit of match included in this, and that's just basically staff time to get the project done.
Dave, I just wanna say this is a great project, and I'm so excited you're doing it, and I'll give you a good example of why we need something like this. For years, I was searching for my great-grandparents' graves in the Tahoma Cemetery in Yakima. I never found them, my brother finally did, but this is gonna be so beneficial to those people who are looking for their loved ones' burial spot, so thank you.
You're welcome. I know our staff wanted to have an electronic kiosk up there so you could just, you know, go on, but the maintenance and the installation cost and the vandalism possibilities, this is just a safer way to go.
It's awesome.
And with that, Your Honor, I will move for City Council to authorize the Parks Recreation and Cultural Services Director to sign a grant agreement with the state of Washington, Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, D A H P, for cemetery sign project.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Harold and second by Councilmember Huffaker, correct? Yes. Thank you. For the city council to authorize the Parks Recreation Cultural Services Director to sign a grant agreement with the state of Washington Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, D A H P, for the cemetery sign project. Any discussion or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Hey, thanks for doing that, David, I appreciate it. Mr. Lewin.
Good evening, Council, Jake Lewin, City Engineer here. My first item I'm bringing is a request for asking City Council to authorize, or sorry, amend our project budget for Confluence Parkway South and authorize the amendment number one to our task order for design build services. So on the screen here, I have the progressive design build model that sort of outlines the steps of completing a project under this delivery method. We're currently under Phase One A, the validation phase, and then you can see their contract amendment right at the end of that, that would go advance us into the next phase, that's where we're at, so this amendment is kind of a planned step. This would allow the, or authorize the design builder to advance the design and development of the project to approximately about a sixty percent design level, at which point later this year, we will negotiate a maximum price for them to complete the design and construct the project. That's, that work is, or sorry, that stage would be expected somewhere in the October to November frame, the work till now, again, is validation, so getting them to understand the scope, the schedule, all the constraints and complexities and requirements of the project, and then they have put together sort of their level of effort to advance the design and provide us a schedule that allows us to deliver the project within our grant schedule. And so, with that, I answer any questions about the amendment or the project that you guys might have?
Jake, that arrow that comes down from that B section there to where it says G M P early work, what is that signifying?
Yeah, so that might look like, as we advance the project this summer, we know for, for instance, we have some, the city has some utilities that are in B N S F's right-of-way. We might advance to relocate those in this, like later this year, in preparation for that railroad work. There might be items on the job that are long lead procurement, that we've been dealing with all signal poles, light poles, we could put together a package to agree on a price for them to go ahead and make those orders as we advance the design on certain known elements to kind of look for opportunities to accelerate our schedule. And one thing about the budget amendment I should mention, it's not changing the total price, it was just making a small change, I did bring that to Finance Committee to increase the amount of preliminary engineering. My earlier estimates didn't have our G M P phase happening so later in the year, so really it's just moving a little bit more design work in the P E phase as opposed to the construction phase, so.
I'll make a motion for the city council to amend the project budget and authorize the city administrator to execute amendment number one to Task Order C P South with Kramer Scarcella Brothers Joint Venture for the Confluence Parkway South Project, Project Number two-two-zero-one-point-one. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson and second by Councilmember Hornby for city council to amend the project budget and authorize the city administrator to execute amendment number one to Task Order C P South with Kramer Scarcella Brothers Joint Venture for the Confluence Parkway South Project, Project Number twenty-two-zero-one-point-one.
Comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do you have the next one also?
Yes, I'm taking over the next item here that our project engineer Nicole Brockwell was scheduled to bring here. This is for, we have a planned project on Ninth Street. Actually, what I should like to start with is just remind everyone what that looks like today. So Ninth Street going down to the waterfront, you can see the sidewalks, this is just west of the track, so sidewalk ends, the road kind of narrows up there. So the city was awarded one point three million dollars in federal funds to do some safety improvements at this crossing, which would include extending the P E D facilities across the sidewalks, putting some median treatments in, and then replacing, or sort of enhancing the rail, the arms, the gates there, so it'll look similar to what is at a Rondo Street. And so the item, I'll just pull it, sort of, the design there. So we've advanced the design in the right-of-way, purchased the right-of-way. This, the item I'm bringing to council tonight is requesting authorization for the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreement between the city and B N S F. So this agreement really covers where the city is gonna use these federal funds to pay for the installation of all this, the C N M agreement covers the maintenance responsibilities of all the equipment. So essentially, the city will be maintaining the sidewalks, the road improvements, B N S F will be responsible for the maintenance of the rail safety equipment that's there. And so, that was negotiated as part of the C N M agreement. The next steps was, once we authorize this, would, B N S F would complete their design, order those materials, and install that safety equipment, and then we could advance to construct the rest of the project.
This funding was January two thousand and eighteen?
That's, yeah, so we were awarded in twenty eighteen. Design and right-of-way went through twenty twenty, twenty-one, and then there was a lengthy period there for negotiation of the C N M agreement, but I think.
Litigation?
Litigation, which the response.
There's an attorney for you.
And the result is that really the maintenance responsibilities are, and were found to be within, you know, B N S F maintaining their equipment and us maintaining the road and sidewalks, so it's within state and federal law.
So it worked out good for us.
It was good for us, it was good to finally get it behind us, and so now we're trying to advance this and get it done for, I mean, you guys saw the, I think, the existing condition, and this is some much needed improvements for this crossing.
Well, Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Burlington Northern Santa Fe for railroad crossing improvements to be constructed as part of the Ninth Street Rail Crossing Project, City Project Number eighteen oh one.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Huffaker and second by Councilmember Cuevas for city council to authorize the city administrator to execute the construction and maintenance agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Burlington Northern Santa Fe for railroad crossing improvements to be constructed as part of the Ninth Street Rail Crossing Project, City Project Number eighteen oh one. Any discussion or comments?
Just glad you guys fought so that we didn't have to do the maintenance on their equipment.
And I also think this is gonna be a great improvement, that intersection, because I see a lot of people trying to figure out the best way through there, and it's not a safe situation now, so this is gonna be great. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Community Development Director, Mr. DeVries.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me see, which one is this one? Change orders, okay. So if you recall, and I'll get by the microphone here, if you recall, last year, the council approved a contract with Pipkin for the construction, site construction for the placement of the pallet shelters units at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission, that work is almost complete, it looks great, but there have been surprises along the way. the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. That work is almost complete. It looks great, but there have been surprises along the way, unfortunately. We had a removal of undocumented fill, some interesting surprises there, a fence relocation to accommodate PUD easement and power pole relocation, some additional light poles and a safety guardrail. We were able to accommodate that within the budget authority we had. However, we're at a point now, we have some remaining work order items that do need your approval, and that is specifically for shower, restroom, trailer weatherization, also power to the shower facility. Originally, they thought that the power at the rescue mission itself would be sufficient. It's not, so they have to trench and extend a line from the road to that, and that's the biggest, biggest ticket item. And then the design of the ADA ramp system for the four ADA units isn't working as planned, and so that has to be redesigned and, and built as well. So the total cost on how that works out, we have a good number on the weatherization. That would be about two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. The ADA ramp system, we just had a meeting this week on that redesign. We don't think it will cost as much, but the initial idea our consultant had was twenty-three thousand. We hope that it'll be half that amount. The trenching and electrical service to the shower and restroom trailer was about forty-two thousand and fifty-two dollars, and then we're asking for a contingency of fifteen thousand, hoping we don't need it, but would really prefer not to have to come back if we do need it. So the total request is eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents for that last change order, but really that's, aside from the pump facility, that's the last change order component for Pipkin that we would have to wrap up those site improvements. And so we would recommend that you would allow the authorization for the city administrator to sign that last change order. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Now Glenn, this is the money for the city of East Wenatchee also, is that correct?
Correct. So it's the combined tax fund, so none of these are through the general fund. These are all through the tax dollars, and we do have the funding capacity in the capital budget dedicated for this work, but the contract exceeds the authority for the city administrator and myself to authorize this remaining change order.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to authorize the city administrator to sign change order in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents for the completion of the site and utility work at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission for the pallet shelter facilities located at fourteen fifty South Wenatchee Avenue, Wenatchee, Washington.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Hornby and second by council member Atkinson. Am I saying it that right? Last, last time I, I kept on saying Atkins, like Atkinson.
Am I doing better today?
Yeah, good job.
Uh, for the city council authorized city administration, administrator to sign change orders in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents for the completion of the site and utility work at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission for the pallet, pallet shelter facility located at fourteen fifty South Wenatchee Avenue, Wenatchee, Washington. Any discussion or comments?
Glenn, is this going to affect the projected open date for these pallet sho- shelters?
Uh, it does technically, but the, the greater delay for the opening is really the next agenda item, which is the, the lift, getting the lift station functional. So this electrical work will be done, should be done far in advance of the opening. It's the lift station which is the biggest delay.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Glenn? Comments? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Glenn. Oh, you got the next one?
I do. If you recall, the city council authorized the funding to do engineering design to assist the Wenatchee Rescue Mission for their sewer lift station. Their pump system, which hadn't really been maintained for over forty years, has failed. They had received contributions from the county and from nonprofits. The county contribution has been used to rewind two of the pumps. One of those rewound pumps has failed, and then we're hoping the other one works until we get the whole system replaced. But imminently, it will, it will fail. So we are happy to, to say we have a design now from Osborne Consulting and, and Grady for a new pump system. The total cost is one hundred and fourteen thousand and thirty-seven dollars. We do have a remaining balance, the rescue man, mission has remaining balance from the contributions of a little over thirty-nine thousand. So the total contribution requested from the city is seventy-four thousand dollars. I just to think about what is the impact of this, of this two city projects to the rescue mission. We have, for the city projects, we have sixty-five congregate care bunk bed, low barrier shelter units there. We have thirteen to fifteen safe park units. They're all using the showers and the cooking facility and the restrooms down there. We have, when it's all built with all the pallet shelters, there'll be up to ninety individuals housed there. So up to a hundred and seventy individuals, plus or minus, versus the twenty to twenty-five transitional units they have for people who say have jobs that are, are working that can't get housing yet. So about eighty-seven percent of the rescue mission capacity is being used by city programs or will be. So it's really important for the success of our programs to get the system functional. One of the things that the rescue mission is doing is they're looking at value engineering. They're working with a contractor to try to reduce the costs, and if there is a reduction in cost, then the city contrib- two city contribution would go down. And because they already have the funds from the county and the non, the other contributions. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, and I would recommend you consider providing for that contribution.
Projected date for the completion of the lift station?
Yeah, that is a good question. So the parts, the pumps themselves, they say will take four to eight weeks to come.
How long?
Four to eight weeks.
Okay.
And in that time, the, the contract, they have a contractor picked out. It will be through the rescue mission. And so, you know, hopefully we can get something in place in July. I'm sorry, I don't have a more firm number, but that's, that's the hope.
But definitely before fall.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your honor, I'll motion for a city council to authorize the financial contribution in the amount of seventy-four thousand dollars for the sewer lift system to be rebuilt and upgraded at fourteen fifty South Wenatchee Avenue for the Wenatchee Rescue Mission.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Roden Stan and second by council member Hornby for city council authorized the financial contribution in the amount of seventy-four thousand for the sewer lift system to be rebuilt and upgraded at fourteen fifty South Wenatchee Avenue for the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. Any discussion? Hearing none? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Project engineer.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Mitchell, project engineer. I am here today. This is for our annual pavement preservation project. We had a bid opening on Tuesday. We got two bids. That's why the numbers aren't in your, in your packets. It's because we just opened bids on Tuesday. We got two bids, and CWA was the low bid, and they were three percent under our engineer's estimate, so we're calling it a win, and we're hoping that we can award them the contract or you'll authorize us to have the contract signed. The streets that we're doing this year are Brown Street, Seattle Ave, Welch Ave, Maple Street, North Harrison, and North Garfield. Not the whole length of some of those, but segments of them. Yeah, so if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All of Maple Street, portion of Maple Street?
Maple, it is between the Ave and Princeton, so by, in front of Kashmir Valley Bank, Winko, the post office, and that one, we're paving at night, so we don't impact all those businesses.
Excellent choice.
That's going to be the busiest street in Wenatchee.
Yeah, we thought about that one. We were like, nope, that's not a daytime activity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Your honor, I would make a motion for the city council to authorize the city administrator's signature and award the contract for city project number twenty-three oh one dash twenty twenty-four pavement preserv- preservation to the lowest responsive bidder, and congratulations on coming under three percent.
We have a motion by council member Huffaker and second by council member Uer for the city council to authorize the city administrator's signature and award the contract for city project number twenty-three oh one dash twenty twenty-four pavement preservation to the lowest responsible bidder. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did, did you say when it's starting? I know, because we're kind of like, I was just curious. I'm sorry.
Oh, it should be about six, six or so weeks. We've got to get the contract signed and get all the paperwork in order.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, what's next? Executive session. Executive session to consider acquisition of real estate by purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero. And we would need a motion for that.
Your honor, I'll make a motion to meet an executive session for a time period not to exceed fifteen minutes with legal counsel present to consider the acquisition of real estate by purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW forty-two dash dot thirty dot one ten one B. Action is not expected to be taken following the executive session.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Huffaker and second by council member Hornby to meet an executive session for a time period not to exceed fifteen minutes with legal counsel present to consider the acquisition of real estate by purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, RCW forty-two point three zero point one one zero one B. Action is not expected to be taken following the executive session. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Oh, I guess we're back out of the executive session, I was told. No, just like I said, no action is, blade is going to be taken, so we got reports. Let's see. How about city council go first for reports? That'd be great.
Solid Waste Committee met, no new big developments. Moderate Waste Facility is still doing great, even with its modified hours. The transfer station up in Dryden got a bunch of very needed improvements, put in a new dumping floor that was all busted up, so it's pretty stable, and, yeah, doing well. And apparently, I don't know if any of you have been out to the Moderate Waste Facility, but they have a shelf out there that people come in and bring items in that they don't want anymore, fertilizers, paint, just all kinds of things. Some of them are brand new, never opened, and it's there for people to come out and pick up if they want.
Council member Atkinson, Hornby?
Uh, I had the link meeting. They're moving forward with the garage to house all the electric vehicles that are on order. Hopefully, we get a positive bid in the next few weeks, so we're going to have to have a special meeting to approve that contract if it comes in where we're looking it to. Also, a to- topic that has come up again that I'll talk to some council members about, about the makeup of the board of, of the link, where there's two county commissioners, one city council member from both of the cities, having the conversation where we cannot change the number of commissioners on there, but we can increase the number of city representation. So it's a conversation piece that I should, we should have. But other than that, I'm excited about the new electric buses that are on, on order, and we can get this barn built.
I'm just going to go over. So now I'll go, and then you guys can go. How's that?
Great.
I want to change things a little bit. Obviously, it was Public Works barbecue. I, I saw a few of the city council members there, and hopefully got the drive a little backhoe or do something exciting there. That was, that was fun, and that was Rob Germain's last one, and he talked a little bit about it. To continue, I think he, he was trying to talk to the young people because he's been in, in public service for quite a long time. He talked about a little bit about retirement and just keep plugging away, and that was, I think it was inspirational what he talked about. Obviously, the, the other thing is the reopening of the pool, and I am so proud of council member Uer on your speech, and council member Atkinson. Thank you for demonstrating a good dive for us. That was cool. It, it is, it was nice, it really was. It is nice to have obviously, uh, other representatives there that was for us, like Senator Hawkins and Representative Steele, and recognition from the swimming head coach, velocity swimming coach. So that was, that was a great, I thought that was great. We also need another code enforcement board, uh, op, op person, so if you can think of somebody, encourage them to be on the code enforcement board, that'd be good, and that's really all I'm gonna have. Now we go.
Okay. Pool opening was really fun. It was very cold, so kudos again to Charlie for jumping in the water. I hear the water was really warm, but it was not warm outside, so you were very brave, but it was really nice to be there, and, and like you said, just the, the support that was there too was really great. It was a good crowd. What else? Finance Committee met, and most of the things we talked about there, we heard about today, which is great. There hasn't been another museum meeting yet, so I think that's all I got.
Next week in June, no, excuse me, first week in June, I was invited for the interview for the police chief. So we're going to do interviews that week. And I think that's it.
AWC, the DEI Committee is having a short meeting. Next time, there is a forum right after that for Pride Month and talking about the LGBTQ community. Also, I'm on the Legislative Policy Committee, and you'll, most of us will be glad to know that the two things, at least the two things I really wanted to see on there, affordable housing and homelessness are on that policy, and they're, we're working our way through it. We're not done yet. We have our next meeting at the annual convention.
Great. Laura, do you have anything for us? All right, well, thanks for everybody to be here. The pool, one other comment, like, it's minimum ten years, but we're hoping like fifteen or twenty years for the.
It's what?
The, the, how, how long that pool's going to last us with this total done? Yeah, we're, so we're hoping, minimum's ten years, but we're hoping fifteen to seventeen years, and by then we'll have to look at other things. And, and I know Dave was here earlier, but I didn't recognize Dave Erickson and all his work and his staff's work to get this, you know, he, he actually was out there on Saturday and Sunday a couple of times too, so next time you see Dave, it'd be good to let him know how appreciative we are of him, so. About anything else, we're probably paying the attorneys by minute, so let's close the meeting.
Your honor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Thank you.
Second.
Oh, motion is second to adjourn, all is in favor?
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. I forget about that.